Hello.
Oh, it's this time of year.
Those new technologies.
I'll sign in on my iPhone. It must be on my end. I don't. I still don't hear them.
Michael, can you hear me? Mike?
Yeah, I can hear you now.
Okay, we were all on mute, so that's probably why you didn't hear any of us, but we can see you and hear you fine. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, I think we're almost ready to start.
Good evening, everyone. Am I on? Can they hear me now?
Yes, we hear you.
You're looking for me to sound like Ronald Ronald?
He crossed out that, so I won't. Ed crossed out Sisters of St. Joseph on that one, so I won't read on.
Thank you. Hello, everyone.
Hello.
I don't know if you can hear me.
We hear you.
Thank you.
We hear you.
Headphones in, it just seems low. I might have to turn my volume up there, huh?
Yeah, we hear you.
Sign of age, maybe. We have Kathy on yet?
She's on. She don't have a camera on, but indication she's on.
I think she has some issues with her connectivity.
Yeah, I don't think we can hear her.
Yeah, I had some trouble logging in myself.
Do I need any help? I always need help, but that's beside the point. As I'm signing a few documents for Rose here, is there anything on the agenda council would like to discuss this evening? I don't know if they heard me.
Yeah, we can hear you, Jim.
Thanks, Dave.
I would like to discuss. Well, in addition to the waves of rules we have to calling for a public hearing on the Bayfront Parkway. Is, well, a couple of things. I want to thank Mel for, you know, nominating Betty Vincent for the street sign, but I do want to thank David Brennan, who has been working hard to have a process for that. And again, I feel frustrated that we have, we're about to start a process. That's for the key state. Favor of it, but somehow our actions just seem meaningless when we pass stuff and then we don't follow through on it. On the purchase orders that I'm going to separate the Eastern States metal roofing for the picnic shelter. We're getting an additional picnic shelter thanks to a very generous donation from the Defazio family. I want to point out to Public Works that two years ago at the study sessions, we asked whether we could start to charge a fee for the use of picnic shelters. We were told by Scott Mitchell that that was possible. And of course, nothing ever happened on that as usual with every suggestion council ever makes on ways to either increase revenue or trim cost. So with an additional picnic shelter, I would hope that the finance people and public works would once again, or I should say not once again, but would remember that we had made that request two years ago. Because other municipalities charge, we had talked about maybe at least having a fee for weekend use. So people wouldn't have to go and camp out to use a picnic shelter. So I just see this as an opportunity to once again remind the people in charge that our suggestions are often and usually just ignored. Thank you.
President.
Yes, sir, Mr. Witherspoon.
I got a email from a gentleman who informed me that there's a lady, I don't recall her name right now. She, she was a vet. She was a vet and she's with hospice currently. But I understand she was instrumental in working with the doggy park of McClellan. And he asked me, could they name the doggy park? Well, I checked with the president, and we have a name for the doggy park already. Then he sent me an email and asked me, could they plant a tree in her name? Or buy a bench that people can sit on and put a plaque on the bench? So I told him I will check with council to see if that's a possibility.
Mel, are they asking for the city to pay for it, or did they want to pay for it?
No, they'll pay for it.
Oh, good.
Yeah, they'll pay for it. They're just looking for permission.
Yeah, because you've been up to J.C. Martin since we did the, the fixing up of the golf course. And there's four or five benches. There's a couple on the new practice area. There's one on the first tee. And there's one on the second tee that various families around town have bought those metal benches. And we've put a plaque on those benches saying this, this, and I'm not going to give out names, but this bench was donated to the golf course on behalf of this family. So we did do it. Yeah, so we've done it up there.
Who should I direct them to?
Maybe David. I'll talk to David tomorrow.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Anything else on the agenda council? Yes, Mr. Keith?
Yeah, I just wanted to briefly discuss, you know, the hiring of the, the new police officers. You know, it's come to our attention that we have six officers detailed out to the housing authority. And so I think it would make fiscal sense to bring the officers that we already have on the payroll and put them back on the streets and have them serve the interests of the entire community full time as they were hired to do such.
Michael, those housing authority police, they're paid by the housing authority. They pay all their salary and benefits and they do help the police when needed. They're not limited just to the housing authority. They reimburse all their costs.
What about pension costs?
I believe it's all their costs and Paul, correct me if I'm wrong.
Yes, that's correct.
It's all costs, benefits, salary, benefits. It's over a million dollars they pay for those five officers. And again, they do help us when we need help outside of their area.
So I guess the question would be, so it's a plus to our general fund budget to have them there?
Yes, it puts five police on, you know, available to us that we don't pay anything to. They're all covered by the authority. You're muted, Jim.
So Michael knows it does put those additional police officers on the street, even though their designated area is mainly the housing authority area.
That's correct.
Great.
I wonder, Frank, is there any problem with citizens calling in tonight? I got a text message that somebody thought that now we were back to only accepting email comments, but people can still call in, correct?
Yes, yes, I let Freda know.
Okay, thanks.
You want to speak again?
Are there any questions at all on the prepayment of the water authority lease?
Mayor, I had a question from a citizen today wondering, does this mean that we will not have a tax increase for next year?
That is our plan, that we believe we're going to set aside enough, at least for the next two years, there'll be no tax increase. That's, you know, it's a difficult time right now. We know for citizens. And the last thing we want to do is give them an increased tax. That gives us at least two years and it really may be more like three years, but it's at least two years where we will not have to do a tax increase. We're going to set aside enough money from that prepayment to cover those two years minimum.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Am I being heard?
Yes.
Mr. Mary, that go also for the garbage fees, the water fees and all the other fees?
No.
In lieu of taxes?
It does not go for the other fees because those are really controlled by like the water authority, you know, the sewer. And that's a separate budget from the city's budget. I mean, you certainly, you, you guys will decide really how the money is spent ultimately.
The folks are still going to get hit with those.
I believe so. You'll certainly have input into that at budget time when you see what the, what the fees are. All we're asking today is to pre, to approve the prepayment. And we still have to work with you and decide for sure exactly how the money is going to be spent. I mean, I've got some strong feelings about how we should spend it, but you, you know, the seven of you will ultimately decide that when you vote.
In a, in a completely unrelated issue, I have been talking with some of my constituents. And I'm surprised it hasn't come up before, but some of them are worried about the tax sale. And so I just want to put it out into the public forum of whether we should or should not be having the tax sale when we are forcibly out of work.
By, by the tax sale, are you referring to, you know, the unpaid real estate tax, selling that to some that's going to collect? I know we don't, I know Paul and I really don't want to do that if we can avoid it because we give up, what, 15% of that revenue, Paul, something like that?
Yes, that's correct.
It's better to just take a year or two and collect the whole thing. It's much better. It'll, and if we can avoid it, we will. The water authority deal may help us do that as well. Again, we're not making a final decision on how that water authority money is going to be spent tonight. We just want to get, get the deal approved so they can move forward. And it's going to be probably a month and a half to two months before they get the money. And, you know, when we first presented this to you last November, we were going to get about $90 million. And then I think the most recent conversation we had was up to 95 million because interest rates came down. As of today, we'd get 101.5 million.
Pull the trigger.
So that's exactly, exactly our feeling. Let's get that in place. Again, it's going to take a month and a half to two months to get it done yet. But as long as we get it done before election day, I think we have a pretty good chance of interest rates not going up. After election day, things could change quite a bit. But if we can get that approved tonight, I believe Paul Voitek and the Water Authority are ready to move forward on it tomorrow. They have a meeting tomorrow. So if we approve it tonight, it'll move forward. And then we have a month and a half to two months to talk about how, how's it best to spend that money and what do we want to do with it?
Mayor, I'm glad you brought that up because I know I've had a lot of questions from constituents about the spending plan. And I, of course, I voiced to you my concerns and the thoughts on that. So again, I'd love to continue to discuss that and also any other ideas we have for income and anything that we could possibly cut to.
Yes.
Income situation in our city. We're not seeing the income, so it's very hard to justify not, not doing some cuts in some way.
Yes, this really, the water authority deal really is a long-term plan. You know, we're going to save, it's a little over 101 million dollars in debt payments. That includes principal and interest based on the current interest rates. And net, you know, obviously we're giving up their, the revenue from them. But net over the 19 years, it saves us just under 30, $30 million over the next 19 years. That's $30 million we don't have to come up with in the budget. It's, it's about one and a half million dollars a year on average. Some years are a lot more than that. Some are a little less. But about 1.5 million dollars less a year, we have to come up with over the next 18 years. I said 19, I should have said 18 years. And that gives us a lot of time, hopefully, to keep, start rebuilding Erie, bring more jobs, bring more people in. That's the way we need to increase revenue. You know, we've been losing population since the late 1960s. We've lost 40,000 people from when I was a teenager here in Erie. So that's what we want to start turning around. We've got a lot of opportunities to do that. And this really kind of frees us up to do that.
Could, could you just elaborate on what you meant about interest rates possibly rising after election day? That kind of sounds like, I'm afraid of what that sounds like. I'm afraid it sounds like the, the talking point that the regional chamber director put into a newsletter warning about the election of Joe Biden. And I hope that's not what you were saying. Aren't we talking about when the Fed meets again? Or why would you say that?
The only reason I said that is there's uncertainty now as to who's going to be the next president. After the election, we'll know who the next president is going to be. So people tend to not do anything when there's that kind of uncertainty for a couple of months. It has no idea, I had no idea if who will get elected and I didn't mean to imply one would or one wouldn't. I just believe once people know who the new president is, things will start to happen, whoever it is.
Thank you.
Yes. Appreciate you asking that. Any other questions on the Water Authority?
Mayor, you know, I've been a little bit of a stickler on this only because they threw in a $350,000 payment on us that equals $14 million over that timeframe. That's one thing that bothered me a little bit. And then we did hire our own consultant that valued the water system at over $500 million. And whether those numbers, whether there's a $50 million leeway each way, I don't know. But one of the things that stuck in my mind was they're saying a water system of that magnitude or as big as this water system has gotten, we should be getting in the neighborhood of $23 million a year lease till up to maybe 25 or 26. Not saying that's what we would expect, but put it as a bargaining chip in the negotiations. And I don't know if that was officially a bargaining chip in the negotiations with the Water Authority. Us, I mean, this year 3.8 and maybe next year was going to be, reach 4 million a year in a lease payment. What we're doing is besides giving a great lease agreement that's already in place for 30 years, we're giving another 10 years at a lease agreement that was only getting us 5 million a year. I, I know we're getting later in the game, but I, I still don't know why the feel or the need is for tonight to vote on this. If it does take two months to get, a month and a half to two months to get a agreement or get all the paperwork done, to get all the papers signed, how it still cannot help us with our possible shortfall this year as well as our short-term budgets next year and the following year? I, I just don't know the need of without checking all our options and alternatives if this is the best deal we can get right now.
Haven't worked on it for eight or nine months now. I, I believe this is a very good deal. We, if we don't, if you don't vote on it or approve it tonight, they will not start any of the work. So it's delayed at least two weeks till the next council meeting or longer. If we do, you know, and we did talk to them in the negotiations about increasing what they charge. Of course, that would mean every city resident would be paying significantly more for water as well as those in Mill Creek and the surrounding communities that also use the Water Authority. So it would be more costly to our citizens to do that. And they basically, their board basically said, no, they would not approve any kind of a rate increase other than the 200,000 every five years that they other than the 200,000 every five years that they've been doing, which is in the plan for the, those additional 10 years.
I guess, I don't know if I'm, I guess with that being said, Mayor, Mayor, I apologize.
That's okay.
Yeah, the city residents would be paying a little more, but so would all the water usage residents, whether it be Fairview, Harbor Creek, Northeast, you know, how far Mill Creek. And then we would be getting more of a lease payment would, would maybe offset that in our tax end of it. But I know we're all tied into a 30-year lease. I just, adding another 10 years onto a great deal for them, it just, and majority of us may not be here for that, but we just want to do it right. I want to do, this is, if not the most important decision or vote I've done on council. It is right up there and the key to the deal, I don't, we want to make sure we've checked all total options. I know Mr. Brzezinski came up with one possibly selling the water system, but leasing out maybe the buildings that are in the city and how all that would work financially. I don't know, but did we do all our due diligence for every possible option?
I believe we did, Jim, and I believe this is the way to go. And if we delay it, we're not gonna get as much money.
Delay it two weeks or a month, we're not gonna get as much money, you don't think?
It increases our risk. The more we delay it, it increases our risk. And you're not gonna get it, you're not gonna get an answer to those questions you just asked in two weeks. It's gonna take quite a while.
Well, I guess maybe not two weeks, but even if we set a month. And I know that although last November, we were in discussion and it was around 90, well, we waited a year or almost a year and it bumped up actually 101 million dollars.
Right.
I'm not saying it won't go down and won't go up, but once again, I'm just, one of those things that we just want to do right and make sure we've explored every top possible option.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Just quickly, because we're late. The old adage is a bird in the hand is worth more than two in the bush. Do what you can get now and determine how we're gonna use it when we get it. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Matt.
Thank you, Matt.
Is there any other comments on council or we'll get our meeting started, please?
I would like to say one thing quickly.
Sure.
I realize that I'm a new guy on the block starting in January and I missed the beginning of it. I wish I would have been involved earlier so I could have thrown that idea out. I don't know how good the idea is. I know I threw it out and everybody got muted. I haven't heard one person come back to me and ask me about it. I don't know if it could even be done, but if it could be, it could save us an enormous amount of money. And I guess my question is, the way it stands now, I wasn't involved in it when you started it, so I will stay out of it. I'll be a no vote, you probably have a four anyway. But I, I can't go 60 years and not explore every avenue that, that we can look at. And I, I don't want to be the sticky wicket, so to speak, but somebody could have at least said, hey, Ed, you can't lease back those buildings or it wouldn't work. Nobody said a word. It was like Ed didn't say anything. So Ed won't say anything. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brzezinski. I think with that, we'll get our meeting started, Rose.
We, we couldn't hear Rose. Excuse me, is anything going on? I can't hear anything.
I can't either.
We're getting Rose unmuted.
Okay, can you hear her now?
Can you hear me?
Now we can.
Okay, approval of minutes from the meeting of 8:5, 2020, and bills for payment on 8:14 and 8:21, 2020. Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Brzezinski, Mr. Keys, Ms. Shaw, Mr. Witherspoon, Ms. Winarski. I did receive some letters of responses for repository sales that are coming up. So I'll read those now. These were emailed to you, I believe. The first is from James McKee, request to purchase 930 Buffalo Road. He addressed the following questions. Is the property vacant or does it have a structure on it? The property is a vacant lot and does not have a structure on it. What are your plans and intentions for the property? I plan to include this property as part of my property next door at 934 Buffalo Road. What condition is the property in? Upon my purchase of 934 Buffalo Road, the property at 930 was overgrown, uncared for, and being used as a dump site. I have since cleared and it maintained it. Do you live near the property? Yes, I am planning to relocate to Erie. I have purchased the property next door at 934 Buffalo Road. And he thought that 930 Buffalo Road was a part of the property, so he will ensure that the property will be maintained and up to city quality. Second, from Yolanda Ballard, I believe, who is interested in the property at 713 Ash Street. The, the answers to those questions are the property has a structured house, small house on it with a yard to the rear of it. The plans are to fix up the house for her and her two daughters. It needs a lot of work, but she is willing to take the risk to secure the property for long term. What condition is the property in? The property seems to be in fair condition. The structure is standing and vacant. Do you, it says, do you live near the property? And she lives six miles away from the property. And how will she provide maintenance, et cetera? It will be my property at which time after fixing up, I will be moving in to live with my daughters. So I plan on maintaining the property as a normal homeowner would to assure the upkeeping and safety of the property. I have put together a team of family and friends who work on houses for a living, and they are ready and willing to help me get this property together once approved by the city. And I have gained access to the property. From Antonio Staff at 127 East 22nd. He's looking into getting the property at 131 East 22nd Street where he's, it says, I've been paying for this open field to be cut every other week for the last five years. So it would always look nice for the neighborhood. The property is vacant with no structure on it now, and I plan on putting a fence installed around the property so I can have more space for my grandson to play and my dog can have his own area to, and I will continue to take care of the lawn maintenance of the property. Hans has, I think, three properties here. The first being 1316 German Street. It is a vacant lot. Hans intends to add the property to its inventory of land held for future development. The property is in good condition. It is a well-maintained vacant lot. Hans owns and maintains 30-plus properties in the neighborhood such as Midtown Revitalization, the Midtown Triplex, Cityscape Homes, and Hans Metro Apartments. And it asks, how will you provide for maintenance of the property? Hans will add 1316 German to its landscaping schedule in the interest of preserving a well-maintained neighborhood for our tenants. And renters and homeowners in the neighborhood, Hans maintains several vacant lots in the neighborhood. The next property Hans would like to purchase is 1304 German Street. 1304 German Street has a small shed and a mailbox located in the center of the lot. Hans intends to utilize the property as a side yard expansion for 1302 German Street and existing Hans property. The shed and mailbox will be removed. The 1304 German Street is in fair condition. The shed is in fair condition and the grass could be mowed. Again, Hans goes on to say how they maintain the 30-plus properties and a plan to maintain that also. And then the last is a purchase of 340 East 14th Street, also by Hans. The property is a vacant lot. Hans intends to utilize the property as a side yard expansion for an existing Hans property located at 336 East 14th Street. The property is in good condition. Hans maintains the last, the lot and will maintain the property. So those are all the letters we've received for repository sales. So those will more than likely be on the next city council agenda for approval. I want to remind everyone that at 8 o'clock, we have a public hearing for liquor license transfer. Then we can start with citizens to be heard. It may have to be interrupted by the public hearing. Do we have citizens to be heard?
Yes, can you hear me, President? President Jim?
Yes, sir.
Oh, I'm there. This is Randy Barnes, 109 Walton Point, Erie, Pennsylvania. Can you hear me, panelists?
Yes, sir.
Thank, thank you, thank you. That's all I need. Just give me the thumbs up. I really appreciate this opportunity and I've learned, listened to a lot of repository sales over the past 10 years, but I really like this part that Rose reads what these people have written down, what they want to do. It really gives a clear picture. Those first couple of people really got a good, makes me feel good that those people want to get this property. That's good stuff. But hey, we've watched a lot of violence in the past couple of months across the country aimed at our federal buildings. And this federal building you have right next door is a beautiful building. If you haven't been in it in quite a while, you should go in and see what they did with the library and the courtrooms upstairs. And they're constantly putting money into it. But I really think, I hate to put the mayor on the spot, but you can think about this, but we need a statement from the mayor that we're gonna allow the police chief to protect that federal building should it come under attack. We've seen across the country where some cities, the mayor say, no, we don't want to protect our federal building. And I think that is the symbol of our government and our freedom. And, and again, I don't mean to put anybody on the spot. It's important we know ahead of time what could happen. Thank you. But I have a couple of things I want to go over that. And, and I want to just mention back about this police review committee, board, safety, whatever. But I 100% disagree with taking the power away from the mayor, the chief of police, the district attorney and council and giving subpoena power to some group of citizens that some of you are gonna help appoint. We're gonna take the power away from the DA and give it to a group of citizens? I mean, people have talked about this. I've heard subpoena power they want to give this group. Then I've also, I saw where the police were having breakfast over the weekend. Isn't that the greatest thing you can do is get the police involved with the community? Then on the very next day, I hear about, we want to have a former prosecutor of the police heading this committee. Now that sends a strong message, but it's the wrong message. Thank you. Hey, one of the largest bond offerings in the county is, is being considered right now. And what is a bond? But a bond is debt. And, and do you know people that try to consolidate their loans? Well, the problem is if you do it every three years, you just keep digging yourself deeper. And that's what we've been doing for the past 20 years in the city. We keep refinancing the debt. And now really, you know, and we, we've laid it off on the Water Authority, but it's still, we're refinancing this debt. My concern is right now is we're gonna get all this money and we can't pay off some of these bonds. These bonds have call dates. They're callable bonds. It can't be called till a certain date. So we're gonna invest this money and get a little bit of interest. And the reason why though, we can't pay those bonds off because they're paying more interest. So while we're trying to earn a little interest on this, this money they've given us while we're waiting to pay the bonds off, anyways, I'm not gonna go into it. You people are the finance experts. You have to understand where the money's coming from, what's gonna happen in three years? How are we gonna plug this hole? Because right now, we're gonna borrow the money as part of this bond. We're gonna have money in our pocket and we're gonna, what are we gonna do in three years? Where are we gonna get this bond debt? Because in 10 years, remember, we, we just had 50 million dollars worth expansion and building in Erie, 50 million dollars. Well, in 10 years, that gets you 500,000 dollars to play with. 500,000 dollars in 10 years. So you have to think ahead. Where are you gonna get the money? Some of you don't have to because like President Jim will be termed out. But we're all in this fishbowl together. What happens to one happens to us all. And I'm gonna give up my time to the next person. Thank you very much. I appreciate everything that you're doing. I know it's a difficult time. I keep saying that every year for the past 10, 15 years. And it sure seems like it gets more difficult every year, doesn't it? Hey, thank you very much. Have a great evening. Best of luck to everybody.
Thank you. I didn't hear you, actually.
Cecilia?
Yes, I'm the court reporter.
Hi.
I'm ready to take the public hearing.
She's the court reporter for the public hearing?
Yes.
We don't hear you either, Rose.
Okay, then we're going to break for the public hearing. Pursuant to the provisions of PA 47 PS 4461 B3 and of the proper legal advertising, the city council will proceed to hold a public hearing via a meeting to hear testimony concerning the intermunicipal transfer of liquor license number R 4948 requested by attorney John Mailer, 100 State Street, Suite 700 Erie PA, for the transfer of PLCB liquor license of the M Cafe located at 5410 West Lake Road, Milker Township, County of Erie, Pennsylvania, to Atomic Bomb Group LLC for the premises located at 2306 State Street, Erie, Pennsylvania. Normally, the, the attorney will have a presentation and then you'll ask for, what do you want to do, for first, against first?
For first and then against.
John Carnival, yeah.
Hello, John? You're muted, John. There you go. You got it.
This is my first time doing one of these Zoom meetings, so hopefully I won't mess it up.
Okay, well, we've called for the public hearing and we have Cecilia, the stenographer, is ready. So normally, you'd make your presentation and then council will hear arguments for and against.
Great, I can read a statement if you'd like.
That'd be perfect.
Good evening. My name is John Carnival and I am manager of the Atomic Bomb Group LLC, which is interested in opening up a tavern at 2306 State Street, which will be known as the Rascaler Cafe. Our family is a longtime owner of the building and we ran the Rascaler Cafe during the 1990s and sold off to a series of other owners. Recently, the owner that operated the tavern last year decided to close the tavern and they sold their liquor licenses to a country fair. So we've found a liquor license that we can acquire, which was formerly used by the M Cafe, which is in Mill Creek. And it's needing an intermunicipality transfer for us to bring that liquor license to Erie. Our place is going to be a full-service tavern and we're hoping to continue to develop the neighborhood and participate in keeping the building open because right now it's vacant, but it is a turnkey operation. So it's ready to go as far as being a tavern restaurant. We are hopeful that you would vote on the intermunicipality transfer this evening and that will allow us to continue with the transfer process with the Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board. And if you have any questions, I'm ready to answer them.
Rose, I believe as the council, we listen for for the proposed item or against, and then we ask the questions. Is that normally how it works?
It's been so long.
It's okay. Yes, let's ask for the... Anybody online in favor of the project or the transfer? Once again, do we have anybody online in favor of the liquor transfer 2300 block State Street? Frank, anybody?
Randy Barnes.
Hey, I have no issue with transferring a liquor license to an establishment in town. There's a reason why we wouldn't want to do that. Isn't this a bar that has been there for a long time and it deserves to be a bar again?
Mr. Barnes, that's why we're having a public hearing.
Okay, well, I don't think you need any more of my input. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anybody against the transfer of the liquor license? Anybody against? Frank is saying no. Counsel, have any questions for Mr. Carnival?
I have two questions.
Go ahead, Liz.
Okay, John, you have other businesses around there, don't you? Or no?
That's correct. We have several businesses.
Yeah, I think I used to see you on my old Newsies stops, I believe. But I was curious, I must say, I was a little taken aback by the name of your business group, Atomic Bomb. I just wondered if you could tell us how you came up with that name.
Well, I'm a big student of history and I like military history. And I've always been kind of fascinated with how the World War II developed and the development of the Manhattan Project, which led to the creation of the atomic bomb. So I kind of was looking for a name that would be easy to register. And a lot of times when you go to register a fictitious name, it's already taken. So I plugged that in to the Pennsylvania Corporation Bureau and the task.
Okay, I was just hoping it wasn't like a commentary on whatever. It sounded a little destructive to me, so thank you for that explanation. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Mal, did you have a question?
Yes, will you have or do you have any memorabilia from the original CAF? Would that be on the wall somewhere?
That's an interesting question, Councilman Witherspoon. And the Rascaler Cafe was opened as a tavern in 1934, shortly after prohibition was repealed. It's interesting to note that the Kohler Building, which was next to the Rascaler Cafe, had a Rascaler Room. And I think over time, a lot of city of Erie residents have confused the two. Now, the Rascaler Room was a place where employees of the Kohler Brewery would go to have samples. And they had a lot of memorabilia and they had a very lovely wooden bar and all kinds of wooden trim and everything. Our bar is kind of newer, but we have some Kohler beer cans and bottles that we keep there, kind of as a memorabilia of the area. It's kind of interesting.
John, you're closing at 2:00 at night?
Um, yeah, that's the rule normally, but I would not anticipate that our tavern business would be open every night until 2:00 AM. However, in the past, when we operated the bar in the 90s, we generally closed up in the evenings on Monday through Thursday around 10:00. And usually on Fridays, we stayed open because we had live music. We may do so again if we ever get past this virus issue. We don't see the live music taking off upon our transfer because technically, you're only allowed to have 25 people in the building. So it'd be kind of tough to have a live music show.
Well, if you own the property next door, maybe you can spread it out into the U-Haul or the truck lot or something. Because as a music lover, I'm all over going to music concerts, hearing live music. I listen to the planning commission meetings and you're definitely in a commercial area. So I am all for your reenlightening of your business. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions, counsel?
It's clearly not a bottle club, correct?
That is correct, Councilman Witherspoon. We are going to acquire a liquor license and operate under the rules and regulations of the PLCB.
Okay, I'm good with that.
Very good. I think that is it. Any other questions, counsel? We can close this public hearing, Rose, and move on. You're mute, Rose.
Rose, hard to hear.
Okay, I'm sorry. I just wanted to let Mr. Carnival know that there is a resolution on the agenda tonight for the vote for this. So somebody from the office will contact the attorney tomorrow and we'll send off the paperwork so they can get it right away.
That's great. Just to confirm, when you guys and counsel will have your vote, you're using the resolution and then upon the confirmation, the resolution would be approved and you'll send the information to my attorney, Jack Mailer.
That's correct.
Well, he'll be happy to hear that because he wants to get this thing taken care of. He said that there's not too many people trying to transfer liquor licenses anymore. He thinks I'm crazy.
How well do he know you?
Well, thank you, city council, for taking my time to meet with me.
Thank you, sir. Rose, I believe that puts us back to citizens.
Okay, at this point, the public hearing is closed and we will return to citizens to be heard.
Margarita Dangle?
Can you hear me?
Yes, a little bit.
Yes, hello. Good evening. I'm here to speak about the situation at night on the east side, especially around East 24th Street rumors and 24th Street also between Parade Street and Wall. We have in front of rumors, night activities.
We didn't get her address.
Late into the night that are loud. We had shootings, we have fightings. And I know the ordinance is about to be...
Could we get your address, please?
Say that again?
Could you say your address, please?
Oh, 1948 West 33rd Street.
Thank you. Go ahead.
My concern is that in front of rumors, people leave with bottles in their hand and drive away. They are fighting, music is loud. So those are like typical things that we should be able to take some kind of action. And I'm just wonder what needs to be done to reinforce those rules a little bit more so that we get a handle on escalating situations like we, in front of rumors, we had three times shootings in a row. There are people gathered 150 at a time, not wearing masks, hanging out together on the streets, being loud, bothering the neighbors. The neighbors are at the point where they are afraid of going out, even to say something because of the shootings. It's just like we are at a point where we have to find different ways of reaching the people who frequent the places and we have to find ways of putting more pressure on the owners. The last video clip I saw from Saturday night, the security guard was watching people fighting, not doing a things. The shots were fired, he ran inside. You know, what do we do? What's our next step? I am reaching out, I say, we all have to put our heads together to take some different kind of actions. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Adam Trot?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Oh, thank you. Adam Trot, 531 West 6th Street, second floor. Thanks for the opportunity just to make a few points regarding the Bayfront Midway project. There was a good study session last Thursday that you guys held. There were some very good probative questions of the project team. Some things that didn't come out that I think are very relevant is the report, the 363-page report that they gave you guys on the 11th hour and said, read this for a vote later today. You know, that's a lousy process, in my opinion. But the report itself, it identifies very plainly that the project is at such a preliminary state that they don't know how to determine what the impacts are. And with a clear identification of that lack of determination of what this project's going to be and the scope and everything, it's very concerning that they were granted a categorical exclusion. And I don't know how that happens, but that sort of sabotages the whole process. What many of us would like to see happen down there, we recognize you want to feed development on the Bayfront. There's no question, we all want that. However, to put an arterial highway and treat the Bayfront like it's Upper Peach Street is completely out of place. It's an access road in an urban setting, not Upper Peach. And we need to design it as such. We would like the Bayfront Parkway to be a people's Parkway, not a vehicles Parkway. And the more access people have to it along both the east and west bluffs, the higher the real estate value will be along the east and west bluffs, thus enriching the city's economic assessment value and reversing the trends that Bukey pointed out in Erie Refocus Plan. There's just some very fundamental common sense things about what should happen versus what's being proposed. And I really strongly request that this project is slowed down and proper due diligence is given. And I suspect probably others will be speaking today for points. But that's my big request. And I did want to give a big thank you to those that did ask good probative questions of the project team and made them think a little harder about the significance of this project. Thank you.
Ron Leonardi?
This is painful. But at least I'm home. I'll be up...
Not Betsa. Mr. Leonardi, you're on mute.
I suspect Ron's probably covering it for the Erie Times News. I don't know that he would be speaking, but...
We can go on to the next one and Ron has something to say. He can come back.
Bernie Smith?
Yes, hi, good evening. All I have to say is I've been reading into this water deal and I'm not so sure for us, but it's been great deal. The city and the budget and all that maybe, but that's a long time to give them control or everything like that. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Fred Attler?
Turn myself on. Oh, okay, there I am. Put my timer on. This is Fred at Sepfer. Can you hear me all right?
Hello, Fred.
Hi, you can hear me, all right. 1738 West 23rd Street, Erie, Pennsylvania, 16502. So first of all, I want to say it's about time. And thank you so much, Kathy, for all your work to get a water fountain. And I certainly hope it's an ADA accessible water fountain that fills water bottles as well. But it's really... fountain that fills water bottles as well, but it's really a good thing. I also want to, I see the curb ramps on there and I want to be sure that the city has made sure that the contracts specify that they cannot have all four corners of an intersection encumbered at the same time, that corners are not encumbered for more than a week at the most, and that there be proper detectable warnings. I do want to mention that the Warner Theater, the construction going on at French Street, there was no attempt to provide alternative access along the street. They could have done that. It's a one-way street. They could have provided a lane of pedestrian access. It's about time the city look at doing that. For this new department, the new planning department, I do want you to please ensure that the new weed definition is incorporated into the quality of life code. And I hope that this new department structure will be more responsive. I hope that if you do approve the water authority lease, that they, you make sure that it cannot be sold or sublet to anybody else. Now, on to the Bayfront Parkway. I have many years of experience with the NEPA process and I've not ever seen a project that did not have a no-action alternative, a true no-action alternative, so you could actually judge the impacts. This is something that's basically being shoved down our throats. They're saying, we are going to address access for pedestrians as we choose to, and we're going to find a way to make the traffic go through faster. Why are we being asked to accommodate all this traffic in the most important part of town? Why did they allow to bring all that traffic down there? There have been some beautiful designs proposed to make it a true Parkway. I would not be the least bit comfortable walking on those walkways. I would not feel safe on those walkways. Who is going to own and maintain those walkways? I would like to be able to cross the street. How are people going to be able to cross Holland Street south of the Bayfront Parkway because there will not be a controlled crossing anymore? People who want to get from the Intermodal to the library, and there'll be even more traffic than there is now. The, the project as it is has not looked at the microscale impacts of air pollution from increased traffic to residents, visitors, and pedestrians. They have looked at air pollution, but they've modeled conformance data for ozone. They have not looked at human beings as the possible receptor of the air pollution on-site in a microscale way. This is a major decision and there should be real ownership and involvement in this project. There was no attempt to say, how would we actually make this what the Bookie planned, envisioned? Bookie told me that, that if he had his druthers, he'd blow the thing up. He wouldn't, he wouldn't make it more. He wouldn't turn it into a trench. So please, do not, do not let PennDOT shove this down our throats. Thank you.
Thank you.
Veronica Wexford?
Hi, I'm here. I live at 40... Hi there. 4124 West Ridge Road, 16506. And I work at the Urban Erie Community Development Corporation, and I'm the Secretary of the NAACP. Two, two things. Speaking for myself, as a person who works with new Americans, I would ask that you consider revising the language of always addressing people in the city who are looking to express themselves as citizens, only because I work with a lot of new Americans who are in the process of approaching citizenship. I just find that language sometimes to be leaving some people out. I know that it might be cumbersome to say persons who live and work in the city, but I'm just going to ask you to consider the possibility of that. Moving on to the Bayfront Project, considering the lack of a waterfront master plan, City Council has a special responsibility to consider the impact of this project on what we know as the jewel of our region. And I have in front of me the letter that was sent to all of you from the NAACP. So speaking in my capacity as a secretary, I'm just going to read a couple of lines from that and reiterate the stance of the many organizations that join together in asking for a slowdown and request for a public hearing and environmental assessment. Erie is no stranger to nationwide practices that carve up, cut off, and in many cases decimate entire minority neighborhoods with highway projects. This type of auto-centric thinking that aligns with the redlining of the past must not continue. Increasing the traffic on the, doubling the traffic on the Bayfront is counterintuitive. Cities across the country are tearing down highways of this nature, and I think you're going backwards if you consider just letting the project move forward despite the fact that the representation from PennDOT, although they did come and do a nice presentation, made it sound as if it's too late to majorly do anything other than plant trees and designate what type of decorative lights we'd like to see. I would, I believe that you have more power and more responsibility and have the opportunity to push PennDOT to move forward with an environmental assessment and a public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Lisa Austin? Lisa Austin?
I'm sorry, I was on mute. Thank you for giving me an opportunity to say a few words tonight. I know that the impression that PennDOT gives is that the roadway is the responsible and really inevitable thing to do to promote economic development along the waterfront. And it's really, what we're learning is that it's actually the opposite step we should be taking in order to promote economic development, to utilize and to encourage more investment on the waterfront. We're going to really need to have a place that is walkable and connected. And the Bayfront Boulevard that's been envisioned by a young landscape architect from Ohio, I think is a great step to really honor the amazing Erie Refocus Plan. And I think that it's, it's the iconic connection that we've been talking about and dreaming about. I think that the Bluff Park that's been discussed, where we take many, many staircases and ADA compliant ramps networking across the waterfront, up on the bluff, would allow so much access to all of those neighborhoods on the east and the west side to really own and to use and to enjoy. And that would help spur not only waterfront development, but certainly in the neighborhoods, there would be more businesses and more people who get jobs at Erie Insurance or Hammett would say, they would live down there and they would be able to walk or bike to work because we would see such a, an improvement in the access to the water. I also think that with the work that Johnny Johnson has just done, the whole awareness now that we have of the historic implications of the waterfront in terms of African-American history and the whole idea of this was, it may have been a connection to get to freedom. I think that's another important thing for us to be thinking about when we're doing anything along the waterfront. We also really need to think about the idea of the environment itself and how is the increased traffic and the increased roadways and runoff from the cement and all of that kind of thing, how's that going to affect our beautiful waterfront? And then, as was mentioned by some of the previous speakers, the unintended consequences of making the roadway more capable of carrying even more traffic along the waterfront, it's going to, PennDOT has anticipated, increase the east side connector by at least 10,000 vehicles a day. And this needs to be really paid attention to because, as you know, we did lose the Viaduct last year, it was torn down. And that pedestrian artery has, the loss of that has forced people without vehicles to make their walks or bike rides along the 290 connector. And it's really important to notice that 40% of the households in that part of the city actually don't have a vehicle, so they must walk or bike, no matter the weather, no matter how they feel. And so to ask those people to endure another 10,000 vehicles of noise, of fumes, of particulates, of dangerous intersections, is really a step that is a shocking thing to be considering, especially as the country starts to really look at the history of redlining and the institutional racism that has been holding back our development as a nation. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Austin, I don't think we got your address. What's that? Ms. Austin?
I'm sorry, I got muted again. My address is 1262 West 9th. And actually, I should conclude by really praising City Council for acting on behalf of the people and, and tabling the motion back in July 1st and then boldly removing it from the agenda in the middle of the month and then calling for that study session. It, it's really, it's such a wonderful thing to see the people being listened to. And now the request, of course, is to continue that forward step of saying, we need to slow this down. We need to have the public hearing that was going to be scheduled back in March, but that was surprisingly changed. And, you know, it's, it's really very clear that this is a controversial project, that this is a project that definitely will impact the environment and for those two reasons should never have been granted a categorical exclusion. So if we're wrong, then we'll find out in that, in that, in that public hearing. But it's just, it's not, it's not a logical or respectful or long-term thing to do to go ahead and to allow this to proceed. It should be slowed down and really looked at carefully. Thank you again.
Thank you. Any other citizens be heard?
Okay, I have a letter to read for the citizens to be heard from the Society of the Holy Trinity, which was given to Ed Brzezinski. I'm going to read it now. Dear Ed, I'm writing to you on behalf of the 900-plus members of the Society of Holy Trinity to express our very strong support of the ordinance eliminating bottle clubs in residential areas within the city limits. The Society of the Holy Trinity, along with Neighborhood Watch, Seraph's Food Market, and Holy Trinity Church, are the anchors of the Trinity Square area and along with our neighbors in the 22nd and Wayne. We have been working diligently to keep Trinity Square safe despite the illegal activity that has been occurring on a regular basis at the Energy Club at 22nd and Wayne and Rumors Lounge at 602 East 24th. It appears the issue with Energy Club is close to being resolved because of the hard work of neighbors and 22nd and Wayne area, but the issues at Rumors are far from over and only getting worse. There continues to be large gatherings of 200-plus people with illegal drugs, illegal alcohol, all on the street corner. Rumors is only permitted to be operating as a restaurant with no alcohol with normal capacity. Eighty-four people in with the COVID-19 pandemic, that capacity is reduced to 21. They are only operating as a gathering place with pat downs before entering, not as a restaurant. And these gatherings are not only illegal, but create a huge health risk to the Trinity Square neighborhood as our COVID-19 numbers continue to increase weekly. We have had to endure shots fired several times this past month. We desperately need the city's help, not only with a new ordinance, but to enforce the existing laws on the books, which permits Rumors to operate only as a restaurant with no alcohol, something which they have not done for months. If the current laws are enforced, they could shut down now. This past week, Rumors was open with a security person at the door, music blaring, not operating as a restaurant, and concluded with shots being fired the third time in the past month. No neighborhood should have to endure what the Trinity Square neighborhood has to endure, has had to endure this past year. It is not getting better, it's only getting worse. This ordinance is so important as it helps eliminate the issue and prevents the same issue happening again in another Erie residential area. It is also critical that this ordinance contains language that these bottle clubs be a minimum of 1,000 feet from any residential building. We appreciate your consideration in helping us keep our neighborhood safe. David P. Thiem and Treasure, the Holy, the Society of Holy Trinity. And that will conclude Citizens to Be Heard. Okay, so we'll go on now to ordinances of our final passage. Council File 16175, Official Ordinance Number 312020, An Ordnance Amending, Ordinance Number 261958, The Traffic Code of the City of Erie by the installation of a stop sign at one intersection at West 25th and Myrtle Street. By Mr. Witherspoon and seconded by Ms. Chaff, the Council File Ordinance Bill Number 16175, and now known as Official File Ordinance Number 312020, be finally passed by the City Council. Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Brzezinski, Mr. Keys, Ms. Chaff, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarski. City Council Pass Official File Ordinance Number 312020, finally by a seven, nay zero. Sorry about that. Put that away so it doesn't go off again. Council File Number 16176, Official Ordinance Number 322020, An Ordinance, in accordance with the 2020 City of Erie Budget, the sum of $5,000 is appropriated from unappropriated and unanticipated revenue. These funds have been contributed by the Erie Area Council of Governments to the City of Erie General Fund for use in the 2020 Census Marketing Campaign. By Ms. Chaff, seconded by Ms. Allen, the Council File Ordinance Bill Number 16176, and now known as Official File Ordinance Number 322020, be finally passed by the City Council. Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Brzezinski, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Chaff, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarski. Council File 16177, Official Ordinance Number 332020, An Ordinance Amending Article 117 of the City of Erie's Administrative Code to establish a Department of Planning and Neighborhood Resources and identifying the functions of the department. By Mr. Winarski, seconded by Mr. Brzezinski, the Council File Ordinance Bill File Number 16177, and now known as Official File Ordinance Number 332020, be finally passed by the City Council. Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Brzezinski, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Chaff, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarski. City Council Pass Official File Ordinance Number 332020, finally by a seven, nay zero. Trip over or anything?
Thank you.
That'll take us into new business, Mr. President.
What's that? What's that?
There were none.
We had that. Then we can.
We did the old business that was the public hearing. So now we are into new business.
And if you want to go through every one, we can. Or if they want to move the balance, we can do that, too.
I moved the balance, Mr. President.
Okay.
Do we have a second? Sorry, Rose.
Number five. And also, no. What about the contract? We separate that, too?
Sure can.
Number 11, the Eastern State's metal roofing.
We should probably separate number four, Rose.
Okay, hang on a minute. Number 30, okay.
Under new business, I guess.
Let me get the contract out and then I'll go back. A lot of stuff tonight. Okay, so I've got number five and number 30. And what did you want, Mr. President?
We should discuss number four under new business also, Rose.
All right, moving the balance of the agenda. Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Brzezinski, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Chaff, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarski. By Mrs. Chaff, seconded by Ms. Allen. Resolved by the Council of the City of Erie, Resolution Authorizing and Directing the Proper City Officials to Enter Into an Agreement with the Erie Water Authority to Accept Prepayment of Its Lease with the City of Erie and to Extend Said Lease for an Additional No Term of 10 Years. Discussion.
I don't know if any other council has anything to say, but naturally, this has been one of my passions. And unfortunately, it probably will not go in the best favor of the city at this time.
You're getting feedback. Getting feedback, Mr. President.
Excuse me? Better? Anyway, as I've brought up a few issues with my counsel, my colleagues, and some of the media, part of going into this lease agreement with the Water Authority, although it may have short-term advantages, taking care of our shortfall this year in our budget, balancing our budget next year, and possibly in 2022, there is some items that were part of this agreement that haven't sat quite as well. There is a $350,000 payment we would be giving the Water Authority over that, not 30 years, but 40 years, as this lease would be extended another 10 years. And that would equal about $14 million. Along with that, we did hire a consulting firm to see what the value of the Water Authority is. Although they couldn't do a thorough evaluation, they did come up with a conclusion of a value of around $500 million. With that being said, a lease for a water system of that size or magnitude should be paying on the average of possibly up to $23 to $24, $25 million per year in a lease agreement. Naturally, we are rated 3.8 with small increments of going up to, up to $5 million. But before I would want to extend a lease agreement at a very cut rate price, I would rather negotiate possibly some more. I know time is of the essence to a certain extent, but when you're making a decision of this ramification and this dollar amount, you want to make sure you cover all possible avenues or ways that is in the best interest of all the parties involved, including our citizens. Short-term, great deal, good deal for the city, covers, plugs a few holes for us. No pundit, and it plugs a few holes in this water deal. But long-term, and, and when I say long-term, after you get past a 15, 20-year, we are in line to lose $81 million. That's all there is to it. Is that the way to do business? I mean, I will probably not be around in 40 years, and majority of us may not, but some of us will be. And I guess I just want to make sure as a council, as an administration, that we do this to the best of our ability, do our due diligence, look at every possible avenue. They, I know Mr. Brzezinski brought something up that was a possibility and, or something to at least look at. And I guess it was said we can do that later. No, we should do it before we sign a deal to see if maybe there's a better alternative. I, I wouldn't have the passion for this if I didn't honestly feel we could probably do a little better or we should have been doing a little better. And with that being said, I don't know if what I'm asking for can be done in two weeks or a month or even a month and a half. I know if we follow through with this planned agreement at hand, we could have the paperwork and all things signed and completed by October. Will that make a difference if it's October or November or December? I don't think so. But I'd just rather be safe and do it right before we move forward and vote on something like this. But my colleagues have been well aware of where we're at in this deal, and I appreciate everybody's comments and concerns and thoughts. But the main reason I separated this is for that in itself. Just want to do it right. And not just for today, but for five years down the road, for 10 years, 20 years. So with that being said, that's all I have right now. Yes, sir.
Yeah, Mayor. Got me now? I had mentioned in caucus that I, you know, maybe to make people understand it a little bit better. When I was a real estate salesman and a broker and a trainer of other real estate agents, I always warned them, find out who your buyers are and who are going to make the decisions. The worst thing that could ever happen to a real estate agent is you take a young couple and show them 15 houses. They finally like one, but then they say, can we bring Mom and Dad and Uncle Tony to see it? And of course, what parents going to do? They're going to find things wrong with it. They're not going to buy the house. All I did was throw out some ideas. I totally understand where the mayor is coming from. I wasn't here in November when all these things were going on. And when I throw out ideas to maybe save us some money, I don't, maybe they're not good ideas. But with the kind of money we're talking about losing here, sure looks to me like it would be something to at least look at. I don't want to hurt anybody with this thing. Mr. President, can I abstain rather than say no on this vote? Can I do that? And I say that only because there was an old philosopher at one time. He said, something I do not know, I cannot say. And there's too much of it that I don't know. It's not because of due diligence. Because I've asked a lot of questions and they tell me I'm too late with the questions. So I probably am because I just started in January, but I've been watching. And that's all I have to say.
The best is saying I can abstain?
I believe you can abstain. You can abstain for any vote you'd like. Any other comments, counsel? Rose, a question? Did you want? Hold up, Rose, I think.
Yeah, so I, I'd like to say that it, that the deal is substantially a better deal than we were looking at. And so that's the thing that swayed me. I don't think, you know, in the initial proposal of last year, it was lucrative enough. But now I think that it may be more lucrative and that we can look at other ways of affecting our long-term debt, even after we do this deal.
Okay, roll call. Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. Brzezinski?
Abstain.
Mr. Keys?
Yes.
Mrs. Chaff?
Yes.
Mr. Witherspoon? Mr. Winarski?
No.
This resolution will adopt 5, 12345, ayes to, one nay, and one abstention. By Mr. Witherspoon, seconded by Mr. Winarski. Resolved by the Council of the City of Erie, whereas PennDOT is preparing for the Bayfront Parkway improvements at State Street and Holland Street. And whereas the project requires coordination with the railroad at the Blue Great Crossing, Bayfront Parkway intersects State Street above a single track of CSXT. And at the Great Crossing where Holland Street crosses a single track of CSXT in the City of Erie, Erie County. And whereas PennDOT is filing an application with the PA Public Utility Commission for the approval to abolish and remove these crossings. The mayor and city controller are hereby authorized and agree to allow PennDOT to file this application on behalf of the City of Erie and authorize PennDOT to issue a notice to proceed, letters to the railroad design and/or construction. And whereas the project requires coordination with the railroad, CSXT, Inc., at the Blue Great Crossing. Discussion.
I asked to separate this. As usual, I'm disappointed that we had a public study session last week on Thursday, only heard from PennDOT. We know that we've received many comments from many different groups about this. And then this comes back onto the agenda. We have, I have a resolution that we will waive the rules and vote on, calling for a public hearing because of our many concerns and questions about the overall project. But one of the things we need to keep in mind is, as many people have stated, how does this fit in with Erie Refocused, which City Council adopted unanimously on July 6, 2016? I want to read from page 33 of Erie Refocused Civic Do's and Don'ts, Guide for Collective Impact. Do reassert Erie's pedestrian scale. Development in Erie must respect the city's pedestrian-centered origins. Downtown, the Bayfront neighborhoods will be recognized as great places when they prioritize pedestrian comfort, safety, and interest. In red, don't design for automotive convenience. Development and infrastructure that prioritizes the comfort and speed of drivers does not make the city more pleasant and desirable. One of the things that was apparent to me from the discussion last week from PennDOT officials was that they were conflating the county's plan with the city's comprehensive plan because they talked about how this discussion had started years ago. Erie Refocused was not adopted by City Council until July 6, 2016. This is the guiding document for decisions in the City of Erie. I had, in addition to the many very thoughtful emails we got, I had some phone calls, you know, asking us to stand up on this issue. I was on my front porch today and some neighbors went by and said, hey, I attended that study session. Go for the public hearing. It was just kind of unexpected and spontaneous. So that helped to convince me we were doing the right thing. When City Council had public meetings before adopting Erie Refocused, there was a story in the Erie Times News, June 16, 2016, with this headline, Comprehensive Plan Gets Positive Reviews. And there was a comment from, I'm glad Veronica mentioned the thing about citizens and people and residents. But I'm still, I'm probably going to call this person, you know, a resident in the City of Erie who said, quote, "Too often, there's no real guidepost for what happens in Erie. Stuff just happens because you get money." And I know we are going to be getting the pressure that, hey, we're going to get this federal highway money. Hey, we can't, you know, thumb our nose at the state. Hey, we've talked about this for seven years. Let's get this done.
You're dead.
One of the problems, as we know, is that there is a lot of, well, we have citizen engagement. And then there is the depressingly familiar pattern of saying, yeah, come to these meetings, we're listening to you, but we really don't hear you. When the PennDOT people kept talking about how many meetings they had, I actually went back. I keep folders on everything. And I was at those meetings way before I thought about running for City Council. I was at all of those meetings, including the Erie Refocus meetings. There was a meeting at East High School, which got very testy because people, citizens, residents, I don't know if there are any new Americans, were talking about how dissatisfied they were with the way the Bayfront Connector had been built. And Charles Bukey, we tend to put him on a pedestal and say, hey, he, you know, delivered this great plan. But he could also be arrogant at times. And I remember in the, in the, it was East High School at the time, not East Middle School. So there's a whole cafeteria full of people. And he, he got, he turned to the people who were just expressing their, their concerns about the Bayfront Connector in particular. And they, he said, well, where were you when the plans were developed? He was putting the burden on the people. The thing is, people speak up and then their concerns are disregarded. And then we have a continual cycle of disgust with government or a lack of trust in government. And I remember feeling like that was a cringe-worthy statement on his part because the powerful interest determined where this was going to go. We hear from people saying, well, you know, the plan years ago, actually, and I think one of the, Mark Maurice Rotavol plan was for this arterial highway to go through. But we're, we're at a different era now. We have a chance to get the Bayfront Parkway and development right, as a lot of people have said. So that's my, you know, some of the things I've thought about in separating this and planning to vote no at this time. I would prefer that we pulled it off the agenda because we are going to ask for a public hearing. But since it's been placed in our laps, I'm voting no. And one more thing, this is really City Council's only real decision we'll be making about this because according to PennDOT, our only future action that we will have or authority or power will be to vote on the maintenance agreements for the roundabouts. Kind of disappointing to learn that, that the people elected to represent constituents in Erie have really very little control. constituents in Erie have really very little control or influence, but we're going to exercise our influence when we can.
Your speaker's on.
Mr. President, I would like to say something. I agree with all of Liz's statements. I would have rather have seen this tabled. And I know it's, it's the railroad crossings is the first step that is needed. But I have been getting a lot of pushback from the citizens that I represent, the people that I represent. And they would like a public hearing and a more stronger environmental study. I am for the public hearing and I am for the stronger city. The last thing I did before going to bed last night, I went through my Google Photos and I looked up all of the places that I have been to in America where I was along water shoreways. And most of those waterways were all slow-moving traffic and not busy traffic because they want you to take in the scenery and go slow. Also, as a parent, when I was raising my kids, I always had more than two kids in tow with me. I cannot visualize a young mother or person crossing two lanes of a roundabout with other children around in a safe way. I asked at the study session if it were written in stone and it seemed like that sort of was. And that really disappointed me. And I also asked if we could say no to the semi-trucks going through. And again, that was not an option. Slower, faster doesn't mean better. And sometimes you need to go slow and enjoy the beauty around you to get where you're going. So I agree with everything that Liz stated. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I have a few comments if I could.
Certainly, Ms. Brennan.
Yeah, I, like Liz and others, I did attend the, the public meetings for the Bayfront. Give ideas. Of course, they can't take every idea and bring them to the plan. But as I mentioned in the study session, connectivity is really the, were the main goals of the project. You know, it's even mentioned several times in the plan. That's, that's what they're trying to, we're trying to do here. But I look at the connectivity as the pedestrians. How do the pedestrians in our neighborhoods, East and West Bayfront, how do pedestrians in downtown get to our waterfront so that we don't have a highway? We have a more of a parkway environment. So, you know, with that connection in mind, with the design of the roundabouts, I won't go into much detail here, but they're really designed for, for traffic, not for pedestrians. And it's really about moving the cars, you know, focused on that convenience, not, not pedestrians. And also, just that there's only so much space down there. It takes up a lot of, a lot of space, these roundabouts. So I have some issues with, with the roundabouts. But the question is that the pedestrian bridges are currently not funded. So to me, I don't know how we provide this connectivity when these pedestrian bridges may not be the priority of the project is providing that connection for pedestrians to get to our waterfront so our East and West Bayfront can get to our wonderful waterfront. So those are, there's several issues that I have there with it. But also, you know, the many letters that we've been getting from environmental groups and constituents. So, and also the doubling of traffic that's been discussed there. So I think there are several controversial issues here. So downgrading to a categorical exclusion to me is, is the question. And that's why also, I also will be supporting having the study session. And I'm really hoping that we could, council could make this plan even better. And again, we're not trying to create trouble here. We're trying to make the plan better for Erie. We're trying to make it better for our children, for our future. So these are really important subjects, important topics to get right. And I'm going to support, do everything I can to make it a better plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brennan. Yes, sir. Mr. Keys?
Yes, I'd just like to say that we are not opposed to having our Bayfront redone. But it does appear that it has been planned for.
You got a lot of feedback.
Got a lot of feedback.
Is it better now?
Could be your mouse.
Michael's on mute still. That's why.
You're on mute.
Still showing up as mute.
Mike, you're on mute?
Better now? Okay, yeah. And so I believe that a lot of the people in the planning stages were from the county and not vested in our city. And the project was scaled to.
Frank, try to correct that.
The red line is through your microphone. That's what you're on.
I'm muted. Hello? Can everyone hear me?
Sound better?
Okay, so I think in the, in the planning stages that a lot of people from the county were on these studies and these boards and that they prioritized how they could get in and out of our city and across our city and discounted that the people who actually live here have a voice. And I think that the voice of our residents need to be asserted, that we need to take seriously that, one, the Bukey Plan did say create iconic connection and that we need those connections from our neighborhoods to our waterfront. And that the plan says to prioritize that. And we just want to make sure that those priorities are followed. And I was going to make a motion with the president's permission. I'll make a motion that we table this resol, this resolution at this time.
I have a second if I can add. Is that in lieu of another study session?
No, study session. Public.
Public session, yeah, public hearing.
No, 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 not in lieu of a public hearing, no.
No, it's, a tabling would be until they.
Till we have the public hearing.
I, I think so, but I, but you can't put a conditions on, on the tabling. But if we table it, then we'll bring it back when it's appropriate.
I'll still second you, Michael.
Thank you.
Could you read the motion, please?
I'm mute again.
Mel, you want the original resolution or the motion that was made by Mr. Keys?
Well, I know the original resolution. If the motion is in order, then we need to deal with the motion.
Okay.
I just need to know exactly what the motion is.
Okay, I'll tell you right now. Is a motion by Mr. Keys to table this resolution, seconded by Mr. Brzezinski?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and I'll take the vote? Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. Brzezinski?
Yes.
Mr. Keys? Mrs. Schaff?
Yes.
Mr. Witherspoon? Mr. Winarski? All right. This motion will adopt to table the resolution five two two. And there's one more separation or a purchase order by Mr. Witherspoon, seconded by Ms. Schaff. Resolved by the Council of the City of Erie that the proper city officials are hereby authorized and directed to issue a purchase order to Eastern State's Metal Roofing, 7820 Route 474, Panama, New York, 146767, in the amount of $3,230.30 for one picnic shelter to be installed at Glenwood Park. Comment?
I wanted to thank the family that has made this donation possible. I separated it because I wanted to remind and probably to let the council members who weren't on council when we adopted the budget, I believe it was two years ago, several of us had proposed that we should work on having some kind of fee schedule for the picnic shelters at Glenwood as a revenue source, but also to make it actually more convenient for picnickers so you don't have to go and camp there like at 3:00 in the morning to get a picnic shelter. That's the only reason I'm separating it. I think it's great that the park is being upgraded and I just think we need to put this in our tickler file for when we start looking at budget items for 2021. Thank you.
All right, roll call. Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Brzezinski, Mr. Keys, Ms. Schaff, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarski. This will adopt seven to zero and that'll take us to a wave rules resolution. This, I think you're all familiar with this. Liz had sent this out by email to everybody today. So voting on the wave rules. Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. Brzezinski? Mr. Keys? Ms. Schaff?
Yes.
No, this is the, the request for the public hearing, the wave rules. Mr. Witherspoon?
No.
Mr. Winarski? Okay, this will, we will waive the rules on this five to two. Okay. By Ms. Allen, seconded by Mr. Brennan, resolved by the Council of the City of Erie. Members of Erie City Council, representatives of various citizens groups, including but not limited to the NAACP, the Prescott Audubon Society, the Clean Water Alliance, and the Sierra Club, as well as Erie citizens, including residents of our west and east Bayfront neighborhoods, have raised many important questions and concerns about PennDOT's preferred alternative plan for the Bayfront Parkway. During Erie City Council's study session on August 13, convened by Zoom and in council chambers, we heard more details about the plan from PennDOT representatives. Those details, including the lack of funding for pedestrian bridges and then concern for pedestrian safety surrounding the chosen roundabout design roadway intersection solutions, have raised further concerns about the future of this project and what its long-term effect will be on the future of Erie's waterfront, our East and West Bayfront neighborhoods, our downtown, and our entire city. Therefore, be it resolved that Erie City Council will conduct a public hearing in September with a date to be determined to hear testimony on various issues, including those involving the environmental impact, aesthetics, public access, safety, development, financing, and planning, specifically whether the PennDOT proposal conforms to the recommendations in the Erie's 2016 Comprehensive Plan Erie Refocused approved by Erie City Council on July 6, 2016. Comment?
I want to thank Liz for her work in bringing this forward. I think a public hearing is necessary. Thank you.
All right, then, roll call.
If I, if I could, Ms. You're good. If I could, Mr. President, I just wanted to say that you, we are not trying to scuttle this project and that we do need a public hearing, but more so than a public hearing, we need to be robustly engaged with PennDOT and, and the Port Authority going forward so that we can get the best project and the best waterfront that we can, can have.
I just wanted to add, I have no problem at all with having a public hearing on this again. I know.
Not again.
Yeah, I'm talking now, aren't I? The Bayfront study has been over six years and of course, that has been the complete Bayfront. I think if everybody or the majority of us on council, ever since the Bayfront's been put in, all we've heard nothing about is complaints on how it was designed or how this isn't right or how that isn't right. But I know they, PennDOT got agreement with the railroad company and that isn't always a simple task. But the last thing I want to do is jeopardize any funding from the state. You know, they, the big projects up to 100 million, the first phase is like 30 million. I, I just don't want to lose monies that will help us redevelop our Bayfront, that's all. And if we have to have a additional public hearing, because there has been past public hearings, public comments, including online information, so it isn't like everybody was in the dark on this, but I, I believe our study session the other night was very informative. I do believe they were pushing for the pedestrian-friendly, bike-friendly with safety in mind. So let's get our public hearing in quickly in order here in September, which would be great. And we can move forward on this to be a partner in our Bayfront development. Thank you.
I think I, I thought I had said everything there was to say in the actual resolution. But I just want to make it clear that there's a difference between a study session and a public hearing. A public hearing includes testimony. And if all those, whatever it was, two years ago, we had acceded to the request to have a public hearing on the ViDuct, we would have eased some of the concerns that arose about that. I know that, I think Kathy and I both voted in favor of the public hearing at that time. And I'm sorry, but sometimes people have to hear things. What do they say? You need to hear things like six or seven times before it sinks in. But I'm going to just quote again from the guy who talked at the city council meeting in June 2016. And David was on council at that time. David had actually, after city council adopted. And David was on council at that time. David had actually, after city council adopted the Erie Focused Plan, David had actually encouraged council to have more public input on it. But here again, I'm going to, so I'm just going to read this again. This guy was, is an attorney. I don't know if he's still here or not. Too often, there's no real guidepost for what happens in Erie. Stuff just happens because you get money. So just a reminder, we
I'll take the money instead of somebody else.
Think we can't have an impact. This is the very same argument we heard about the EDDC money that was coming in. Oh, we better take that money. The state's not going to give us the money. We gotta do it. We gotta do it. And we had our, said we wanted, we wanted a different process, and we were successful. Anyhow, I'm ready to vote, though.
Okay.
I have another comment if I could, Mr. President. Speaking about the the issues. Yeah, we were not really trying to block anything, and I don't think having a further discussion, I think it will definitely help the project. As Charles Bukie had said before, you know, we have made, the city has made some bad decisions in the past, and I think we're trying to ensure that a bad decision is not made again. And I think if we could take one more step to take us further and make the better decisions, I'm supporting that. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, roll call?
Yes.
All right. Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Brennan? Mr. Brzezinski? Mr. Keys? Mrs. Schaff? Mr. Witherspoon? Mr. Winarski? All right, this was, I'm sorry, I got your no, Mel.
Yes.
Okay. This resolution will pass 621, and that'll take us to committee reports, Mr. President.
All righty. Ms. Schaff, you give us a committee report every day, and we appreciate that. So we'll let you go first tonight.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank you all for voting, approving the water fountain that will be going in Perry Square. I am living testimony that water is needed, and I have met so many wonderful people this summer, and there is about 75 bottles a day that go out to the people, and they are so very, very thankful. So a refillable ADA accessible water station will be a wonderful thing when it can be put up when COVID is over with. So I'm so appreciative for that. I'm appreciative for passing the water authorities thing that we did today because we're in a COVID time, and this is a tragic time for Erie. And I'm just so thankful that we won't have to raise taxes for two years in a row and build up our city to become more economically secure in the coming years. So I'm glad that that happened. I went to the zoning meeting by Zoom, Blighted Property Review Committee meeting by Zoom, Planning Commission by Zoom, Human Relations Advisory Commission, but they weren't able to have a quorum. So that didn't quite happen. And the opening of Keller's is a wonderful thing. Celebrating our history, I think, is so important. And I think magic and comedy will be a wonderful addition to our community. It's absolutely beautiful inside, if you like historical pictures and things. And I was glad to see the powerful women's coverage voting mural go up. And I was so glad to see Joyce DiBocchio present that day as well, to honor her and all the work that she has done on city council and as mayor for our fine city. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schaff. Ms. Allen?
Okay. I have a, like Kathy, I've been attending a lot of Zoom meetings. The Erie Redevelopment Authority has some pressing financial issues and usually only meets every other month. There will be another, an additional meeting. This will be September 14th at 4:00 PM. One of the things I was disappointed to hear was the solicitor for the Redevelopment Authority who said that this upcoming meeting could just be advertised on the Erie Redevelopment Authority website instead of in the newspaper. One reason is to save money, but he also said because of COVID, some of the public information notice requirements have been relaxed. And he said, they only have to give 24-hour notice for a public meeting now. And he said, this is as opposed to having everybody who has nothing to do tune in. I think that's pretty insulting to think that there are people who have nothing better to do than to attend public meetings. Government is there to serve the people. It's not there to serve special interests, and it's not there to denigrate people who want to attend public meetings. So he isn't going to advertise in the Erie Times News. I'm telling people right now about this Erie Redevelopment Authority meeting coming up. There was, Kathy mentioned the lack of a quorum. There's also a lack of a quorum at the land bank meeting this past Monday, so that meeting has been rescheduled for this coming Monday at 1:00 PM. I also attended the zoning hearing board meeting, and I'm not going to say anything pro or con against the developer who proposed apartments for West Second Street. But I was really disappointed to hear one of the commenters there kind of sneer and refer to this person as a, quote, Jersey City developer. Now, we have, Mel is originally from New Jersey, and my lead husband is from Bridgewood. But this guy is originally from Erie, and I don't think it bodes well to tell people, we don't want you because you're from Jersey. Anyhow, so that just kind of irked me. And one of the things that really disturbed me, I watched Undercover Billionaire today from last night, and I'm sure everybody's excited, oh, we got more publicity again. No one on that show had a mask on, and it's my understanding, at least based on what he said, it was a year ago, that he was here. This guy came in, he hugged people, he shook hands, he sat around in his new restaurant in a semicircle where no one was social distancing, wearing a mask, even though there was a sign, a blackboard in the back of that business saying you must wear a mask when moving from table to table. They showed the kitchen, nobody was wearing a mask. I don't want Erie to be known as the maskless city. I'm on, in addition to all the city Zooms that I'm doing, I'm also on Zooms with a lot of my friends from around the country. Most of us are grandparents. We are heartbroken that because of the way this COVID has been mishandled, that we cannot travel to see our grandchildren. So I don't know what Glenn Stern's deal is, but if he comes back here and COVID is still going on, he better well wear a mask. This was an opportunity to show that Erie is leading the way, not being idiotic. I was happy to see that there's a lot of progress being made with the faith leaders, the interfaith community, talking about racial healing and justice in Erie. I'm sure hoping that one of these days, I do believe now, maybe there are some female faith leaders involved in this, but we haven't actually seen any images of them. I'd love to know that women are as, have an integral role in this also, because there's an intersection, racism and sexism intersect, and when you diminish one, you diminish the other. Which also brings me to, I really appreciate Veronica's comments about kind of being sensitive when we say citizens to be heard, especially because we also learned that under the current administration, the fee to be, to apply to become a citizen of the United States on October 1st is increasing from $640 per person to $1,160 if you're applying online, or $1,170 if you are filling out paperwork. According to USA Today, that's an 80% increase. This administration is doing everything possible to denigrate and discourage immigrants and refugees from adding to the vibrancy of our country. I was heartened to read in the paper on Sunday that George W. Bush has a new book coming out in which he has portraits of immigrants and refugees, portraits that he's painted. So there are still, there are still people on both sides of the political aisle who understand how important these newcomers are to our country. That's my report.
Thank you, Liz. Mr. Spoon?
And thank you, Mr. President. My report is very brief. I agree with Liz's report, especially the Jersey situation. We'll take care of that next time we come, Liz. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Brennan?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to have a few comments about the Water Authority deal, just kind of for the benefit of a lot of people that are listening out there, as to kind of the process that we went through to kind of look at this. But I know there was a lot of time that we took to review the short and long-term effects. Not an easy decision, like many people have mentioned, reviewed numbers, financial charts, debt service scenarios, many discussions, debated on the details. We've received advice from the finance consultants to consider. I made some, a lot of calls for input. I received a lot of calls giving input. But I'm saying this because without a careful review of the information, it would be impossible to make an informed decision. But given the long-term financial benefits to the city in the proposed prepayment of the lease, I supported the proposal. But I want to, as I've spoken to the mayor about at the last finance meeting and recently, you know, I, the spending plan of the prepayment funds is kind of a, still a question to me as to what we do. And as the mayor has mentioned, that there is a discussion that's going to happen as to what's going to do with it. So we need to be smart. We need to have a strategy, how to best put those funds together or spend the funds and to use them correctly. But also, you know, I prefer, as I've mentioned many times, to find more creative ways to bring in more income and to also look at whatever budget cuts we can. We only have so much money come to the city, so something needs to give. We need to make sure that we have a strategy that will not further burden our residents. As far as my report, the Erie Park Authority, there was a board meeting on the 11th. Just to update everybody, there's a EPA is drafting a proposal for municipal services agreement with the city. I know there's been other past brainstorming discussions with the Erie Park, Erie Park Authority, so we'll hear from them. I'll report if I hear anything further. There has been a concern by the Park Authority for the parking closures and excessive loitering in garages, a lot of health hazards going on. So I know that they've had some discussions with the city, and they want to, you know, continue to work with the city to help support taking care of a lot of that. Capital project still ongoing. They started planning to make further improvements with elevator already in 2021. I also want to report for the authorities, the online accessibility resolution that we passed not too long ago, the administration, thank you, Renee, Frank, and many others. They've already started gathering information, documenting authority information, so that the work is well underway for this initiative. Appointments for council and the mayor are coming up, so hopefully we'll plan on using this online process. And we are meeting myself, Renee, and several others to talk further and discuss and develop this process, and I'll report back to council to make sure and get everybody's input. The street naming, co-naming resolution that we had, I'm working on the process for that, and I'll share it with council again to get everybody's input, to make sure it's a, it's a simple but good process that we have to move forward, to do this process of co-naming streets, reviewing other cities, seeing what they've adopted for the process. So if any other council member has any ideas or thoughts, best practices, let me know. Also, thank you for all the people that have sent us emails about the bayfront, sent us emails about the Water Authority. I appreciate you taking the time. I know it takes a lot of effort to, to look and see what's going on and to give your opinion, so I thank you for that. Thank you for your report.
Thank you. Who's next on our list? Mr. Keys? That's a good answer. Mr. Brzezinski?
I think I'm muted. Just remind everybody that Zabawa is takeout.
You're going to be there? Thank you, Mr. Brzezinski. The only comment I have this evening, well, last comment I have this evening, I agree with Mr. Brennan. Okay, now that the
You got feedback, Mr. President.
That means somebody's on. Now that the water lease deal has been passed, that was phase one of what we have to do as a council to move forward on what we're going to do with money and how we're going to do it. I hope we
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Ask Frank to see if he can correct that. Rose needs to be muted.
You muted, Rose. Thank you. Sorry about that. I guess now that the water lease deal has been approved by council, I'm asking my colleagues and the administration to, let's look at all possible avenues and options that we may have on what we do with this money. I know the mayor and the administration have put out the debt reduction, and who knows, at the end of the day, that may be our best option, but I ask that we do our due diligence on this part of it now that it's been passed, that we look at all options on what is going to be the most effective, beneficial way for us to move forward with this. And that's all I have this evening. Mayor? Yes, sir.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Spoon?
I would like to, I would like to recommend that our finance committee sit down with the administration. You know, we can all be there if we have the time, but definitely let our finance committee take the lead for us along with administration. And like I said, we can all be there, no problem, but if we can, at least our finance committee should be right at the helm with the administration. Thank you, sir.
I'm good with that. Thank you. Mayor, are you still with us?
Yes, I am.
Hello there.
Hello, greetings. Couple, couple things real quick. First, our press conference tomorrow will be talking about the census, encouraging people to take that, and that's, that's very important. We're going to talk about, we have a new dog license that's available and other services in City Hall, and we'll be discussing the, a little bit about the Water Authority, which I'll also talk about in a minute. I had the chance to go to Keller's grand opening on Friday, and that was very incredible, I have to say, what Bobby Borgia has done to that place. I think a couple of you were there. It's, it really is amazing. I mean, I had a chance to take my pic, to get my picture taken levitating against the wall, which was, which was pretty neat, and it looks, it looks really good, too. Yesterday was the 100th anniversary of women's right to vote, which it's just amazing to me that it's only been 100 years, that, I mean, and stuff like that is really good to remind us of what we've gone through, and obviously, as good to, to remind us of what we've gone through. And obviously, as many of you have already stated, we still have a lot to do to create real equality, which is something my team and I absolutely want to do. We're looking at possibly putting on a diversity, equity, inclusion consultant. That person's job is basically to promote diversity and equity, and look at city government, what our practices are, what our community practices are, and tell us where we still may have some intrinsic bias built in, and how we can correct it. So we want to use that. You'll, obviously, that will come to you for a vote before we do anything. But we want to use that to improve equity, inclusion, diversity, within City Hall especially, and any, any city-based businesses as well. So you'll be hearing a lot more about that as we move forward. And as Dave mentioned, I think there's a total of 34 appointments that you and the mayor's office have to make to boards and committees. And we want to go through the same open process that we did last year, which will, basically, we'll advertise it, we'll take applications from anyone interested, we'll ask for a resume and a letter of interest, and explaining why they want to be on that. And then, at least with the mayor office ones, we will then go through those, pick out the top, it's probably going to be 40 or 50 to have two or three interview for each open position. And then, you know, then we'll be making recommendations based on that. And I think you're planning to go through a similar process, which I certainly encourage you to do. Last, but no, I say this for last intentionally. I want to really thank you for approving the prepayment of the Water Authority. We still have to decide how to spend the money, and you're going to have a say in that. And I totally agree also with David when he said we need to find ways to bring in more income and to reduce our expenses, and we'll continue to work with you on that as well. But the Water Authority deal, I believe, my 40 years in financial services, I think it is a very transformative thing. It's not a short-term thing. It's mainly long-term. As I mentioned earlier, it's going to save us at least a million and a half dollars every year on average for the next 19 years. And we'll be making changes, I'm sure, over the next five years, let alone the 19 years, to try to continue to approve things. We definitely should not have, unless something very unusual happens, there should not be any need for any tax increases, at least for the next two budgets, 2021 and 2022. So 2023 would be the very earliest, and obviously, I'm going to work with your help to try to avoid that as well. This really allows us now to focus, my team and I, on really trying to grow other city revenues and reduce expenses, as Dave was talking about earlier. So thank you very much for approving that. I've already communicated with Paul Voitek, and he is, he's moving forward. Right now, we want to get in place as quickly as possible, so we can time when we do it, when we can get the most money, bottom line. So thanks very much. I'm very pleased with what you did, and I'm honored to be with you this evening. That's all I have, chief. You're muted, Jim.
President, you with us?
Hello, Mr. Betts. Are you with us this evening?
I am. The only thing I have is that the planning, as you recall, we've had two ordinances that deal with after-hours clubs, dance clubs, bottle clubs. You passed the first ordinance, which was a licensing requirement ordinance and an inspection ordinance. We now have the second ordinance on the horizon, which is a zoning ordinance amendment. Before it comes to council, it has to go to the planning commission. That has happened. That process has been completed, and the planning commission has just issued, I haven't had the chance to read it, but they've just issued some recommended revisions to the ordinance. What will happen from this point is that that will then be presented to council. Council would need to hold a public hearing, and then we would have our traditional two readings before passage. But it, we are finally at a point now where I think it is ready to go on formally onto council's plate, and we can try to get this thing moving pretty, pretty quickly. But the public hearing will be scheduled in the very near future. That's all I have.
Sounds good. Thank you very much. Mayor writing? Didn't hear me when I said thank you, too. But if there isn't anything else from council, I believe we're going to adjourn.
City Council adjourns at 9:45. Mr. Winarski, Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Brzezinski, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Schaff, Mr. Witherspoon.